Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call it to order the regular meeting of the City of Nashua Planning Board for January ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. Happy New Year to our board members and staff. It's been a while since we've been together, but we'll get things going. First item on the agenda, Ms. Harper, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Mayor Donches, Mike Peterson, Bob Ballinger.
Here.
Adam Varley.
Here.
Maggie Harper, here. Dan Hudson.
Here.
Scott Leclair.
Here.
Larry Hirsch.
Here.
Cameron Green.
Here.
And older woman, Klee.
All right, we have a quorum. Next item on the agenda, approval of minutes from December fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. Has any member of the board had an opportunity to review the minutes and is willing to make a motion regarding their acceptance? Mr. Leclair?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of December fifth, two thousand and twenty-four as written.
All right, thank you. Motion by Mr. Leclair, is there a second? Second by Mr. Green, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Oh, any abstentions? One abstention, Mr. Hudson? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda, communications. Scott or Sam, or any further information come in after we received the posting online?
Michelle. I believe the Michelle Drive has, staff report's been edited to include the zoning approvals that were provided. And obviously, the Michelle Drive information that indicated it was in the RA zone is incorrect. It's correct on the staff report. And I believe the other item on that particular project was the...
Continuance. The continuance?
The continuance, yes. Yeah, exactly. The applicant has requested a continuance for that project until February sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. That just occurred, so those are the updates for it.
Very good. Thank you, Scott. Next item on the agenda, a report of chair, committee, and liaison. Ms. Harper, anything to report on today?
Nothing to report, Mr. Chair.
All right. I might have one. I'm gonna embarrass him a little bit, but Sam, would you like to talk about the major award that the city received for being a housing champion?
Oh, sure.
Feel free to...
Yeah. So, the Bureau of Business and Economic Affairs at the state, they had launched a housing champions program, which was, in part, a recognition of communities that have taken regulatory steps to lower the barriers for housing development. We were one of eighteen communities that received this designation, and as we've received that designation, we become eligible to apply for certain grant funds. The announcement of those grant rounds will be published this month, I believe, so we might go chase some money.
All right, well, thank you for your efforts. Well, well done, you and the rest of the city staff, so...
And I would also just like to extend a thank you to the many developers that do work in the City of Nashua to bring the housing to fruition.
Excellent. All right. Before we get into our regular cases, I would like to read the planning board procedure. Procedure of the meeting is as follows. After the legal notice of each conditional special use permit, site plan, or subdivision application is read by the chair, the board will determine if that application is complete and ready for the board to take jurisdiction. The public hearing will begin, at which time the applicant or representative will be given the time to present an overview and description of their project. The applicant shall speak to whether or not they agree with recommended staff stipulations. The board will then have an opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff. The chair will then ask for testimony from the audience. First, anyone wishing to speak in opposition or with concern to the plan may speak. Please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. This would be the time to ask questions you may have regarding the plan. Next, testimony will come from anyone wishing to speak in favor of the plan. The applicant will then be allowed a rebuttal period, at which time they shall speak to any issues or concerns raised by prior public testimony. After this is completed, the public hearing will end, and the board will resume the public meeting, at which time the board will deliberate and vote on the application before us. The board asks that both sides keep their remarks to the subject at hand and try not to repeat what has already been said. Above all, the board wants to be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on the testimony presented and all applicable approval criteria established in the Nashua Revised Ordinances. Thank you for your interest and courteous attention, and if you would kindly please turn off or mute your cell phones at this time, it would be greatly appreciated. All right, with that stated, moving along. Old business site plans, there are none. New business conditional use permit, case eight twenty-four dash zero two-two-eight, property located at four twenty-seven through four twenty-nine Amper Street. Has any member of the board had a chance to review this application and is willing to make a motion regarding acceptance by the board? Mr. Leclair?
Yeah, I'd make the motion that the application is completed and ready for us to take jurisdiction.
All right. Motion by Mr. Leclair, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Varley, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, board has jurisdiction. If there is a representative for the applicant, please feel free to come right up to the podium and just state your name and address for the record.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Guang Ling. I'm here on behalf of my friend and my wife, Terry and Sean, as I'm speaking for them on behalf of this case. To begin, so we... So, the purpose of this, my presentation is to ask for waivers for technically one ninety fifteen D six for one thousand feet abutting to business alike, and then the one ninety-two eighty-two B nine subdivision plan submitted requirements for one thousand, for to show the existing conditions within the one thousand feet. So, a little background information, we're recent grads from Boston, from Massachusetts. We're opening a luxury modification watch and vape store. It's a hybrid business model that we're presenting to the city. We account about ninety percent of watch, then, and then ten percent of the vape, and we are presenting a different type of vaping products than the usual kinds within our studies. What we have right now in the, around the area are disposable ones, which they have bigger mods, and they vaping, they dispose them. We have a smaller version of that, so we require more of a, a machine, and then the disposable cartridges. That's our business model, and we are selling to more of the, to vendors than, we're more of a vendor type, that's why it's ten percent, than the business-to-customer type. And then regarding, I just looked at it, regarding to the, the business alike abutting to the, the one thousand feet, we, our store, four twenty-seven, unit six, our previous, our previous plan was to rent the one next to it, which is Sugar Puff, which is stated in the, in the papers that it's abutting to it, they're closed, but then somebody got a first step on that, so, so we couldn't get it, so we decided we can rent it out. We never knew that the, the code, apologize, that one ninety fifteen for the one thousand feet abutting like, like classified uses are in effect, because we thought we're, we're right next to it, and the, the other store was already closed. I think they listed four different vape stores around us, the hub, and then the Sugar Puff has already been closed, it's temper, it's permanently closed, and then we have, we're abutting to Smoke Haven, which are actually a client to us instead of a competition. We are selling them, the vapes, as a vendor. And then we have already did our sales, they are interested, and they're willing to buy from us. And I'm here just to ask if we can have the waiver be done, and thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Thank you for your, your presentation and your explanation. Questions from the board at this time?
Did you want to go through the conditional use permit criteria?
I am so sorry, this is my first time doing this, I do not know. So, for the conditional use permit criteria, for number one, the building structure and use of specific authorized by the use of matrix, one ninety fifteen table one, fifteen dash one, as a conditional use. So, that summarized what I just said earlier. We're a watch-focused, we do, we have already had half a year of experience on, on, online stores, so that's why we're opening one up, because ourselves been doing pretty well in that sense. And then, number two, if completed, the development in its purpose, location will comply with all requirements of this article and specific conditions or standards established in this chapter for the particular building structural use. We are committed to comply with all local regulations and building codes and safety standards. Again, our focuses are on watch with vape as a smaller portion. And then, number three, the, the building structure or use are not materially endangered the public health or safety. Again, we were, I did mention that, we're, we sell cottages and mods, so the mods are actually more of a, the things that you carry with you, you don't dispose them, you, you buy the disposable pods, which are minimal, to, as minimal hazardous material, in that sense. And then, again, with the, we did say our, in our thing that our business operates includes age verification for vape sales, there's no schools around us. And then, number four, building structure, the, or use of not sustainability to devalued abutting properties. Again, sorry, that was the, the one I just talked about. Number five, the building structure or use of, use will be compatible with the neighborhood and adjoining or abutting use in the area, which is where, which is to be located. So, Amper Street, it's very busy. I think we have, so, we're, we're under highway business district, and our commercial area located primarily adjacent, adjacent to a heavy travel roads, such as Amper Street and Daniel Webster Highway. Our proposed use for properties to classify under the code one thirty-seven is only use the tobacco and lounges and stuff, and we're under the local business and general business D one and D three downtown zones. Okay, number, number six, the, the building structure or use will not have substantial adverse impact on highways and pedestrian safeties. That explains, again. Number seven, the building structure or use will not have substantial adverse impact on natural and environmental resource of the city. These are, the disposable pods are, you can, it's not hazardous, so you can just store in the trash, it's not battery-operated, it's cartridges, instead of with the one with the, the regular mods with batteries in it, so they're more safety. Number eight, adequate public utilities and community facilities are available to the property to ensure that with the purpose, proposed use and not necessitate excessive public expenditures and providing public services. Well, the, as we said, the property is well-supported by current public utilities and infrastructure, meaning our operation will not place any additional burden on the public services. Last, as number nine, that the use of our street parking and downtown zoning district are consistent or compatible with the existing use of off-street parking in the area. We're, our retail stores are not, it's, it's not like a grocery shop type of thing, we had, we're in the plaza, where there's two restaurants, and we're, and there's Geico's and stuff. Normally, the parking lot's pretty free, as our data, we have, we've been recording a lot of the traffic datas, so I don't think this would be an issue for parking, since we do have, we do have regular hours, so we don't open till late night, that, that doesn't comply with the, the restaurants, so, I, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for going through the criteria. Pardon me, questions from the board at this time? Okay, all right. I'll do a quick poll, is, is anyone in the audience here this evening to speak in opposition or with concern to this application? All right, seeing none. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of this application? All right, seeing none, I'll throw it back to the board, one last opportunity. Any questions of the applicant at this time? All right, thank you, feel free to take a seat, we're, I'm gonna close the public hearing, we're gonna go into our, our public meeting right now, so thank you, thank you. My, my personal thoughts, obviously I'd love to hear from the board as well. I, I don't inherently have an issue with the granting of the thousand-foot waiver requirement in this particular case, given some of the other commercial entities and similar uses potentially, even though I think the applicant made a compelling reason why they're not exactly analogous to some of those. I, I wouldn't have a problem with it, given, again, kind of the retail commercial nature of the corridor, and that, that plaza is kind of tucked away, so my general thoughts are that that's not incompatible with the rest of the neighborhood. So, that, that's, again, my general thoughts would have, I'd love to hear from the board if you have other, other opinions on the matter. Ms. Harper, please.
Yes, although I appreciate your presentation, the presentation very much, chargeable devices with pods is not an uncommon thing, and all of those stores sell those type of things. I feel very strongly about the ordinance in place with the thousand feet, I think it was put in place for a reason, and I would not be in favor.
Thank you. Other board members? Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, I think similar to what you had said, Bob, that, I'm not even sure what the primary use here is, if the primary use is the nicotine, synthetic nicotine sales, or if it's the watches, so, given that it is, I mean, within a thousand feet, I think it's better to have it, you know, fifty feet away than it is to, it's more than that, but if you're gonna have the same uses that I'm concentrating, it's probably better than every six hundred feet, or, you know, something like that. So, the fact that this is about's a similar use, very nearby, I think, I don't have objection to it either, although I'm not a personal fan of the use either.
No, understood, and I think that's always been a little bit of some of the consternation with these, it's, it's, it's not, it's not necessarily being in, in, you know, in favor or opposed of, of the use, it's, it's whether or not the waiver criteria is satisfied. I, I think the last one we dealt with was one on Daniel Webster Highway last year. So, yeah, and regarding what the majority of the business ultimately has constituted, it seems like the applicant kind of took the burden upon themselves to at least identify as tobacco for, for presentation of, of the waiver criteria. So, irrespective, I guess, of ultimately how the, the actual sales break down, I think that, that's a, still a primary element that should be considered, so. But other, other discussion from the board, Mr. Varley?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I would just echo some of those thoughts, you know, in terms of the, a little bit around the cluster, I mean, the, the standard for the waiver is no negative impacts on the direct abutters neighborhood or city, and I kind of look at the same way, in some ways, the, the fact that there are existing businesses that are relatively close, particularly in this, in the, you know, and this is also a heavy commercial corridor, in some ways it makes more sense, it's going to be more likely, it seems to me that the applicant can establish that it meets that standard of no negative impact, because you say it's a consistent use. There are already, you know, several existing similar uses in a, in that vicinity, to have a traffic commercial corridor, if we're going to have these uses, it makes more sense, I think, as well, to sort of have them in these spaces rather than all over the place. I, I think we had kind of a similar discussion around the referenced, you know, prior case that was on DW Highway. You know, and I, I guess I would also just note, just, you know, more broadly speaking, you know, the Board of Alderman, Dr. Doris has said, you know, without discretion on the board's part, you can't, these cannot be within a thousand feet of, you know, a school or, or youth-serving organization. You know, I, you know, the Board of Alderman could just as easily say, the thousand-foot requirement is non-discretionary on the part of the board, but if they're going to give us this discretion and on this basis, I personally think the applicant has, has probably done enough to establish that they meet the requirements of the waiver here.
Thank you, Mr. Varley. Further comments from the board?
No, I mean, I think I've already voiced sometimes in the past, I think the thousand-foot rule for like uses without any reference to the zoning and the type of area is a little wonky, you know, it's, it's, you know, it, it's hard to apply that in a dense commercial area, so, you know, for the reasons that we, several folks have talked about, so I, I see the waiver as being reasonable.
Thank you, Mr. Leclair. Further discussion or comments from the board? I guess we, we might as well just touch on it, the, the, the other waiver with respect to the existing conditions, that's a, that's a pretty standard one that we, we see often, and I, I think, given the, the scale of this proposal, that's one that's certainly reasonable. But I, I think with that said, is any member of the board prepared to make a recommendation or, or a motion on, on this application? Mr. Varley?
Mr. Chair, and I would, per our recent slight change of process, I will suggest I make a motion as to the waivers first.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Varley.
So, first, as to the requested waiver from section one ninety dash two eighty-two B nine, which is the, the prohibition on similar uses within a thousand feet, I would make the motion that that waiver be granted on the basis that the applicant has demonstrated that there are no negative impacts on the direct abutters neighborhood or city, based on the presentation and, and the discussion among the board. And then, as to the second waiver from one ninety dash fifteen D six, with respect to, oh, sorry, yes, to requiring, showing all existing conditions within a thousand feet, that that waiver would also be granted on the basis that strict conforming would pose unnecessary hardship, and the specific circumstances indicate that granting the waiver would be consistent with the spirit and intent of the regulation, it should be granted on that basis.
All right, thank you, Mr. Varley. There is a motion for granting of the two waivers that were requested by Mr. Varley, is there a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch, any further discussion?
Just, just a clarification, did the, is one ninety fifteen D six, that's the primary use waiver, and one ninety dash two eighty-two B nine is actually the...
Oh, yes.
So, the references of the subdivision things are reflected in the motion?
Yes.
Do you want to amend it, just to kind of flip those back?
Yeah, I will, thank you, Mr. Leclair, I, I will amend my motion to correct the references, so that the first waiver with respect to the, the thousand-foot limitation on similar uses will be referring to section one ninety dash fifteen D six, and the waiver with respect to existing conditions within a thousand feet will reference section one ninety dash two eighty-two B nine.
Motion as amended by Mr. Varley, Mr. Hirsch, would you still be willing to second that?
Of course.
All right, second by Mr. Hirsch. Scott, thank you for the clarification on that.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, Mr. Riley, not to put you on the spot enough, you'd like to follow through on the motion regarding the conditional use permit?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chair, yes. So, having approved the waivers, I would now make a motion to approve the substance of the conditional use, use permit, new business eight twenty-four dash zero two-two-eight, finding that the, the application does meet the approval criteria set forth in section one ninety dash one thirty-three F, with the one subsequent condition indicated in the staff report.
All right, thank you, there's a motion by Mr. Varley, is there a second? Second by Mr. Green, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, have a great evening, thank you. All right. Moving along in the agenda, new business subdivisions, there are none, new business site plans, there are none. Other business...
Wait, oh, don't, don't we have to consider eight twenty-four dash zero two-three-seven? That's the referral? On administrative action?
Oh, my goodness, you're right, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I, I only looked at the first one, my bad. Go back a step, all right, under new business site plan, case eight twenty-four dash zero two-three-seven, property located at Fort Sanders Street, is any member of the board had... is any member of the board had an opportunity to review that application and was willing to make a motion regarding acceptance by the board? Mr. Varley?
Yes, I will make a motion that that application is complete and ready for the board to accept jurisdiction.
All right, motion by Mr. Varley, is there a second? Second by Mr. Leclerc. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, we have jurisdiction. Is anyone here to represent the applicant or the property owner for the Forest Sanders Street property?
Good evening, my name is Bob Simons from SMC Management, and if you have any questions, I'm available.
We might need a little bit more than that, and feel free to lean on Sam if you need be, but we've dealt with a lot on that property, and so anything you could do to help clarify exactly what we're voting on would be extraordinarily helpful.
Certainly. When the site plan was approved, there were, there was an existing street called Sanders, and due to the width of the right-of-way to get parking on both sides, we had parallel parking on the west side of Sanders Street, which got constructed on our property, then you had the right-of-way, and the parking on the east side of Sanders Street was within the boundary of the right-of-way. Part of the site plan was a calculation of the number of parking spaces required, and those fourteen spaces was part of that calculation. After the approval of the site plan, we did not seek aldermanic approval for overnight parking for those fourteen spaces, so it created a conflict with the numerous spaces provided, available and usable for the buildings. So we have requested a, an exception to the planning regs for the parking count to remove those fourteen spaces from the requirement for the project, and that's what we're looking at tonight.
Mr. Varley, please.
Yeah, just to clarify, if I understand correctly, the request, or the relief you're seeking here is ultimately intended to be temporary, right? You would, the plan is still to get those spaces approved?
Correct.
And so you would come back into conformity eventually with the?
Correct. The challenge that, the challenge that we have is that we have sought and obtained an occupancy permit for all three buildings, but we're not in compliance of the site plan because of the overnight parking regulations in the city of Nassau, as I understand it.
Sam, did you have something to add, or?
Just to make sure, these are the spaces that are on the entrance tier.
Yeah, on the right-hand side of Sanders Street.
So they're not, they're sort of dedicated to the buildings, for the most part, right?
We would like to believe that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's a little confusing, but the ones on the, on the west side, or left side of that drawing, are actually not in the right-of-way, they're on their private property. Those are not what we're talking about, those are included in their parking counts. But they'd also included the ones on the east side or right side of that plan, which are in the public right-of-way, so they're technically public spaces, and, you know, granting those to them for their use solely would require Board of Alderman sort of an action. So I don't know whether it was, I know, there's varying recollections, I think it was maybe intended at the time that part of this development agreement with them, or that those would be granted to them, is what some people recall, but, long story short, anyway, those fourteen spaces really shouldn't have been included in the parking count, and that's, not anything I think that they had intended to put over on the city or anything, that is probably also partially a city mistake in terms of counting those in that count, so, I understand they're just trying to clarify, you know, clean up that record, so to speak. Should, certainly Board of Alderman made, you know, could entertain overnight parking on those ones in the public right-of-way, they could entertain permitting those to, you know, making those available for permitting to specific sites or individuals, but that has not happened yet, and isn't something that can be done expeditiously, so, we're just trying to, trying, I think the intent is to make them comply, as was noted, with the way things are.
Sure, and I think, just to add to that, the minimum parking requirement for the site was 266. They do not achieve the 266 number without those parking spaces in the right-of-way. So a waiver probably would have come in handy originally, you know, otherwise we would need to do a waiver to meet those 266.
Yeah, a question for the applicant, yes, I mean, they're requesting the waiver, but I just want them to, I just want the applicant to, you know, testify that they believe the 252 is sufficient, I mean, I know they would desire the additional spaces, but I just want them to be on the record as stating that they believe the 252 is sufficient to support the use. Is that fair? Is that fair?
Well, we've only leased fourteen units, so for the fourteen units that we've leased, absolutely, that's enough. It is our intention that we built those parking spaces for the use of the project, it was the intent, that it was part of the parking count, and we certainly want to straighten out how we get to use those spaces, so that'll be our next step. But for the number of units that we've leased, and for the foreseeable future until we get through the next phase, absolutely.
All right, and I just want to be on the record, just that this board clearly can't make any promises in any way, shape, or form about the use of those spaces, or the granting of those spaces for their use, so, that's, that's, that's a Board of Alderman action, is my understanding, and so, I just want, I would just want that noted for the record.
Quick question for Sam. Assuming that the applicant moves forward with some sort of request before the Board of Alderman, either to make the overnight spaces, or I guess to effectively make them private spaces, would that be something that would come back to the Planning Board for a recommendation?
Oh, that's a good question. I don't believe so, no. We've received other parking, overnight parking requests, and those go to the Committee on Infrastructure, and I don't recall there ever being a procedural element that gets a Planning Board referral. Granted, those have been for different situations and not specifically associated with any particular development, but I don't foresee that coming before this board.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I guess one more follow-up question for Sam. Do you see the waiver request, I guess it's the most expeditious way to sort of move this to the next phase?
Yes, absolutely. Yep.
All right, thank you. Other questions from the board at this time? All right, so, I guess, has everybody heard enough to the point where we might be willing to make a motion with respect to the waiver request?
Probably got to check public anyway.
Oh, yeah, I think they're not, but you guys, you guys want to comment? You can't, all right, we're here for the next one, all right, thank you. All right, no comments from the public on this one, so we'll, we'll close the public It's unfortunate, I think, that it came up later in the process, but if there's a way to sort of fix it now, at least in the interim, knowing that there may be, you know, more permanent action coming down the road, I wouldn't inherently have an issue, especially given the percentage that they've actually built now, and if they need to work out the details of the fourteen additional spaces, then so be it, but I obviously, I'd love to hear if the board has other thoughts on the matter. Mr. Varley?
Yeah, I mean, I guess the way I look at this is, we're just, we're ratifying what's out there in existence, and, you know, there's already been COs issues, like, we're basically just saying, let's not make this non-conforming while we kind of figure out, and hopefully there's, there's a resolution to it, but it seems to me this is sort of, the housekeeping is too light a word, but we're trying to remedy what is the existing disconnect, so.
All right, thank you. Other comments from the board? All right, well, seeing none at this time, would anyone be willing to make a motion with respect to granting of the waiver? Mr. Leclerc, please.
Sure, I'll make a motion regarding 824-0237, a site plan amendment, and that motion be to grant a waiver from 190-198A to allow a total of 252 parking spaces, where 266 was required, and in granting the waiver, the board is utilizing the criteria indicated in the staff report.
And, Mr. Leclerc, if I may just make a recommendation, that the additional language be added, the strict conformity?
Sure, I can, yeah, I can add to that strict conformity with the regulation would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations to specific circumstances or conditions of the land indicate the waiver will properly carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Leclerc, is there a second? Second by Mr. Green. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, next item on the agenda, other business, we did not have any regional impacts? I don't think in our?
We don't have the tentative agenda assembled quite yet.
Okay, very good.
As everything that is slated for the 23rd, you have already seen and ruled that they are not DRIs.
Okay, awesome, thank you, Sam. Next item on the agenda, Board of Alderman referral R-24-120, authorizing the conveyance of portions of Dozer Road, and, didn't know, Sam, if you wanted to give an intro, if there's folks, audience that wanted to speak to this first, or how did you want to tackle this one?
Well, seeing as Kevin Walker made the trip, I'm sure he's itching to speak about it.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening, my name is Andy Prollman, attorney with Purney and Prollman, here for the John Flatley Company, with me tonight is Kevin Walker, and happy new year, everyone. This discontinuance of Dozer Road was before you for a recommendation last year, or maybe late 2023, and, to make a long story short, with a lot of back and forth between city staff, the city attorney, myself, the John Flatley Company, we all came to realize that Dozer Road is actually owned outright by the city, and so it's unlike a regular discontinuance, we actually have to go through a purchase process, and so that's the resolution that is before the Board of Aldermen, so we're looking for a positive recommendation from this board back to the Board of Alderman. Just to finish this piece off, we have two projects, we have a subdivision where Dozer Road goes right through the middle of it, we have that flex industrial building, Dozer Road is a piece of it, with the acquisition of Dozer Road by the John Flatley Company that ties up all the title work, and the project can move forward, so, we're simply looking for your positive recommendation back to the Board of Alderman.
All right, thank you, Attorney Prollman. Sam, just given the history and the context, did you have any, anything to add to that?
It's a fair summary, by their acquisition of the land, we're able to execute a lot merger, which then facilitates the 45 lot subdivision, I believe, that's the number, and this is just the last piece of that puzzle.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Questions from the board for either Attorney Prollman or staff? All right, seeing none, would anyone be willing to make a motion with regard to favorable or unfavorable recommendation regarding this resolution? Mr. Varley?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to provide a favorable recommendation on
All right, thank you, Mr. Varley. Motion by Mr. Varley, is there a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. All right, any discussion items, anyone, anything on anyone's minds? No?
No.
All right, so, do we need to close this hearing?
Yeah.
All right.
We'll adjourn this one.
All right, being said, our regular agenda has concluded, and I'm going to adjourn the hearing at 7:45 PM. Oh, no?
We can do a motion.
Oh, jeez, all right.
You can make a motion.
I thought I had to close that one, and then?
I'll make a motion to adjourn it.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
It's all right.
The cold has been throwing me off, Scott. I'm sorry, motion, let's unadjourn it. Motion by Mr. Leclerc to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Harper. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chair?
For the 2025 Planning Board Year.
All right, thank you. Motion by Mr. Leclerc, is there a second? Second by Mr. Green. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No? All right, motion, motion passes. Congratulations, Adam, Maggie, I look forward, well, look forward to working with our entire crew. Again, I think we have a good board, so, thank you all very much. I think with that, if there's nothing else, go for it, Scott.
I'll make a motion to adjourn again.
All right, is there a second? Second by Mr. Green, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned at 7:49.